Regular meeting called a order. Councilmember LaFredo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Quinn.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Mayor Meyer Campbell.
Here.
Please stand. Please bow your head for a moment of silence. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are going to move to item E listed on the agenda, the appointment and swearing of the police chaplains, Ryan Major, Greg Hopson, Mark White, and I apologize if I say this wrong, Elon Chanel, Oddly Largey, Farah Majors, Lydell Atkins. And could we have all of those individuals please stand side by side?
Move it.
Councilmember LaFredo.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell. Yes.
Okay, we're going to swear in the chaplains now and one rabbi at Asbury Park, and I'd ask that you join with us. I'm going to ask each of you to repeat your names, we'll do the swearing in together. Okay, we'll begin someone up here to hold. Right, I'd like you to repeat your name, and when I say "I," their names will be on the shelf.
Oddly Largey.
Greg Hopson.
Farah Major.
Ryan Major.
Repeat after me. To solemnly swear or affirm.
To solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the saying.
And allegiance to the saying.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of chaplain or rabbi.
Of chaplain or rabbi.
Police department.
Police department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
At this time, we would like to hear from Assistant Prosecutor Tom Luther.
Can I just have the chaplains come out for a second? We just want to acknowledge. Thank you very much, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge the chaplains, congratulate them on their new swearing in. Just by way of introduction, the Chaplaincy Program came out of the Asbury Park Community Development Initiative, which is Mayor Campbell has indicated earlier, chaired by herself and I. The program was started about three years ago. The chaplains have undergone formal training, they've been certified, they've been deputized. They've actually been up and running and working, and Pastor Mark White is also a member, and Pastor Lydell Atkins, who I really have to credit with being the person who led this whole program and got everyone certified and got the funding for the certifications from Triumph Life Church. He is the real shaker remover behind the Chaplaincy Program. But in any event, the chaplains are here for the city as volunteers, in addition to the regular duties as ministers, as rabbis, to help with law enforcement and help the city. Specifically, they are here for notifications. If there is a death in a civilian's family, or from a crime, or from a motor vehicle accident, they can do the notifications. They are here to do ride-alongs with the police department to act as a community liaison. They are here to participate when juveniles are arrested, in working with station house adjustments, to be that third party, to put the hand on the shoulder of a young person, so that the young person knows that they can rely after the arrest on a chaplain to follow through with them. The chaplains are going to act as community liaisons between law enforcement, the police, the prosecutors, with the community. If there's problems, if there's an issue, or something like that, people can go to the chaplains before they have to come to the prosecutor's office or the police department. The chaplains are there if there's any type of other problems that are out there. If there's a situation that they feel that there's going to be a retaliation because of something that has happened on the street, and the chaplains get word of it, the chaplains will do an intervention. What we have here is an invaluable tool. It took a long time in the making, and it would not be possible were it not for the volunteer participation of these chaplains. So I just would ask that you give a real good applause for everything that...
I would like to thank each and every one of you, and it is the commitment that you have made, your volunteering, the importance of what you will do when you are out there with the police officers, what you will be doing when you are interfacing with the community. It is this type of thing that I believe that adds to the other groups that I have spoken about, that helps us as a community here in Asbury Park, that moves us forward because of the commitment, the volunteerism, and the true concern for our community. And I would ask those of you out there, there is a way that you can get involved too. But, I thank you so much in the City of Asbury Park, all of City Council, thank you. As to compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in the following manner: The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster and Star Ledger on December the 18th, 2013, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are in file with the city clerk.
May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting, with a three-minute time limit for each speaker, one time around?
Move to open.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner, any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The Chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and terminate any further comments.
Please state your name and address, you have a three-minute time limit.
First of all, good evening, Honorable Mayor Campbell, Mayor Campbell and other council members. My name is Barbara Knight, and I reside at 406 Second Avenue, Asbury Park. And I would like to present to you five questions. How do you justify the high tax increase? People are struggling to pay their present taxes. By whose authority? I want their name and names. What do you see in the end result? I see abandoned homes being recycled by profiteers.
You know, let me say this, we knew that this would come up, because it's been a sore point for many of the residents. And so I've asked the city manager if he could just briefly talk about the assessment.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. It is unfortunate that some people's tax assessments went up greater than others unquestionably. The residential as a whole actually has gone down, the commercial section bearing the larger increase, because those property values as a class increased at a greater rate than did residential. However, there are a number of residential properties, primarily in the eastern section of town, that have seen their property values increase substantially as a class. I can tell you that the state legislation, the tax assessor, is governing to fairly implement the rules of the state, and the rules of the state are quite simple. What would a property sell on the open market between a reasonable seller and a reasonable buyer? He has no other choice in which to determine the property assessment. Fortunately, Monmouth County is in a program where assessments will be brought to 100% value every year. So if the increase in taxes have affected your property values, your property assessment will subsequently go down next year. I would suggest if you want to know what your annual taxes would be, you would take your first half and your third quarter multiplied by two, and that would be your most likely annual tax bill. After assuming the adoption of tonight's budget, tax bills for the fourth quarter will be mailed in approximately two weeks. I should say that those properties that were paying less in the years past were unfairly burdening other properties who were paying more than their fair share. So again, the assessments for the city will be brought to 100% value each and every year. So if there are individuals who believe there are inequities, I would suggest that you see the tax assessor, and he can adjust them for 2015.
Thank you. Can I add to that, Jack? Could you correct me if I'm wrong? But we hadn't been assessed for ten-plus years, and so now that we'll be assessed annually, nobody's going to get hit as big of a hit as they took this time, because we should have done this roughly ten years ago.
That's correct.
Roberto Walters, 617 Banks Avenue. I have three quick questions. The first one is, I noticed that you're revamping the application for the jobs in the municipal. Could you please also revamp the city website and have the jobs posted there? It's a struggle and a fight and a search to find any advertised jobs in the city, and no wonder that they can't be filled with any of the residents here, because the people in the know will always know, and the locals who rely on the local advertisement never know what is going on. My second thing is that we are a city plagued with drug and alcohol, and we had a municipal alliance for drug and alcohol, and that is being cut off. I'd like to know why, and why we couldn't continue the program under the last administration. I also see in the coaster building our budget for this year, that there's money put inside for the municipal alliance, and if that is not working, where's the money going to? And my third thing is that with the police and the community and all that is going on, I also sit on the committee for the Juvenile Conference Committee. I've been there over two years, and yet to see a police liaison there one of the evenings. Thank you.
Mr. Judy, can I just talk about your...
Can I just do a brief thing on the website? Only because, so the website, as I'm sure many of you know, is continuous thorn in my side, right? So what we did was, we went out to bid for a website, and because we're a city on transitional aid, there's a number of hurdles that had to be jumped over in order to get the funding, to get the contract signed. So my understanding of where it is now, is the entity that is going to help us build this, I was on the phone with them on Tuesday afternoon, we did a phone conference, finally got the first check, which will allow them to start the process of building this website. So you are, I agree, you're singing to the choir, the fact that this website has taken this, I could go bananas about, but I can't stress like, we're working on it, it's just, it is as painfully slow for me as it is for everybody else. One sits up and going, absolutely, not only jobs, but paying your bills online. I mean, we want to have a virtual city hall, so people aren't down here waiting online, people aren't doing any of that, you know, that the website would accomplish all this. So I wish I could say it's going to be done quickly, but we literally had our first meeting just for them to tell us all the information they need, which is daunting from the departments, all of the applications, all of the code, the codification that Fred talked about. It is very slow going, but it's going.
With the drug alliance, we had a lot of discussion around the continuation of the drug alliance. We had a grant for $12,000. What we found at the culmination of the grant, was that even though we had a 25% cash match and a 75% soft match, what we actually found was that it cost us probably about $20,000 more, to make that 12,000. What we found was that the paperwork, at the end of it, and the quarterly reports, became so cumbersome, that we had so many staff people involved in it, and so many training hours, that it wasn't cost-effective for us to continue, not at $12,000. I had a discussion with the alliance coordinator, the county alliance coordinator, and the director of the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Program in Freehold, and told him that for $12,000, it just was not cost-effective, because it was costing us approximately $20,000 more than our soft match and our cash match. So it just was no longer cost-effective for Asbury Park. And that was the reason why we chose not to reapply in this next round of funding.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and all the rest of the people here. I've got three things I'd like to mention to you all here in court. My name is John Loon, I'm a senior citizen, tax clerk, resident for Asbury Park, been for many years. First of all, I'd be very big. The police department in Asbury Park, lots of them live in different places, and that is not a good policy. Most of all, the people here know that, you know. They put down, the mother or the grandmother live there, and they don't live there. If you were the policeman or higher official, how you can be so concerned about a place where you don't live, you know? And I think it should be a way that everybody who wants to be a police officer should live, not put their address down in Asbury Park, but live in Asbury Park, because if you do so, you'll be more concerned about the place where you live. Like a person will always protect their home, better anyway, yes. That's one of the things, and I'd like somebody to start taking action on that. Also, by tax payers, I went up a few months ago, and I find a lot of areas, there are some people that tax excess low, and also houses in better shape than others, I know that's a fact. I went up to where they had the computer, you know, and I found it's mostly, all the areas Caucasian have a low excess tax, you know, and when they sell the property, they get a good piece of money for it. And that's one of the things should be looked in, and it's been going on for some time. I was just fortunate enough to look in the computer where one of the guys was going to, and I said, hey, run that back, and I found where I was living, somebody living next door have a piece of property, got three income, and that profit, that's the mine, but when they sell the property, they make good profit. That's one of the three things. Also, I am a senior citizen, and we need a little bit more handicapped, you only got two handicapped here, and the handicapped, and there's a lot of people there that drive, but I'm one of the handicapped, I'm not one of the worst ones. But there's a guy who drives a bus, his name is Pete, he put two notes on my car, and one was a threat note, and he acting like a policeman himself. I spoke it to his superior, and he haven't done a thing, but I don't think he or anybody else, other than a police officer, or one of the higher officials, should put a note on anybody's car. We need more handicapped, at least one or two more. And Pete, he pops wherever he want, you know, it's almost, he's the runner of the parking commission, you know? He likes that. And I spoke it to both his superior, you know, and the note he put, the last one, was a halfway threat note, and I don't want him ever come near my car or ever put a note, it's not his business to do that, you know? And I was thinking about taking some action on it, but I thought about this, you know, but Pete is one, you know, and nobody seems to stop him. He pops that big bus anywhere he want, and he only can pop one bus at a time. One of his superiors said, well, it's more than one bus. Sure, there is more than one bus, but he can only drive one bus at a time. And he do another thing, he's one of the things who don't have, dislike me, and I don't care that much for him, but he gonna respect me, you know, as a man and a citizen.
Thank you very much, and I'll tell you what I will do, I will get the paperwork, because one thing is for sure, there are two parking spaces at the senior center, but they're primarily for residents, and so we do need one or two more handicapped parking spaces there.
And stop Pete going around trying to be an official and putting notes on people's cars and so on, that's one of the things, he needs to be stopped, only that, thank you very much.
Sure, next.
Good evening, Council, Kathy McQueen for Wesley Court. My comments and questions are about the recent flooding of Wesley Lake onto Lake Avenue last week, where we lost a total of fifty, over fifty cars in that flood. We moved onto Lake Avenue in 2007, and we did not have any issues with the lake between 2007 and 2011, three months prior to Irene. In a bad rainstorm, the lake came over in 2011. We most certainly had bad rainstorms between 2007 and 2011, including nor'easter type storms, and we never had an issue with the lake. So my question to the council is, what has happened to the lake? What hasn't happened to the lake, that it cannot absorb the storm runoff from elsewhere in town? And what is the plans by the city to mitigate this, so that this does not happen again?
Our city engineer, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I'll just say that I think that the last storm was somewhat of an aberration, it may have been eight inches of rain in an extremely short period of time. At least when I checked the garbage cans that had liners early last morning on the boardwalk, they all seemed to have a foot of water in them. I will bring it up with the, there's a separate Wesley Lake Commission that both Neptune and the City of Asbury share. If you want to give me your name after the, or I have your address at 4 Wesley Court, I can send you the next meeting schedule, so you can appear. I have yet to attend one of those meetings, but I plan to ask that same question. The city hasn't taken, nor has Neptune, taken any actions that would change the water level of the lake.
There is an additional storm drainage going into Wesley Lake?
Not that I know of. I mean, now, I don't doubt that there's been additional construction in and around Neptune, Asbury, where there's more impervious material, and there's no absorption of rainwater, but I think the last rain was, you know, unquestionably an aberration, but it's something that we can take up with the Wesley Lake Commission.
Please, the lake is not equipped to handle this type of situation. Thank you.
One of the things we talked about, or at least Tony and I talked about, was, you know, should, could we have better warn the residents of the storm? Could we have sent out an alert, an email just saying, and as somebody who lives on Deal Lake Drive, I'll be honest, we flood all the time, and we did not flood on that storm, which was a bit surprising to me, because I just assumed we would. So when I saw, obviously, Lake App, that was, I was shocked, living on Deal Lake.
So we're wait, so we're concerned what's going on with Wesley Lake?
Agreed, agreed, and I think one of the things at least the city could do next time is certainly send something out, saying if you live at or near, you know, or you park your car near Sunset Lake, Deal Lake, or Wesley Lake, you know, this would be the time to consider moving it.
Next.
Good evening, I'm Dave Sobotka, 309 Lake Avenue. I'm here also to talk about the flooding last week on Lake Avenue. I have a rain gauge on my roof, it's pretty accurate, we got five inches of rain, four of it was in an hour and a half. So it was a lot, but not unheard of. I'm trying to figure out what Kathy didn't say here. I just, as there's more building going on, this is only going to get worse, because as there's more roofs, more driveways, it's all going to empty into the storm drains and wind up in Wesley Lake, and I think that's why it's getting worse, because we still have the same three-foot pipe leading into the ocean as was there probably 50 years ago. So I think something needs to be done about that, and I think there should be some kind of a study to look into this problem. I thought, I looked at Claire Hope, I think that's her pronunciation, she seems to have, for the presentation to the Shade Tree Commission, and that's, she seems to have thought this through a bit, about having it, having the lake empty into the ocean a lot better. Yeah, and then the warnings, I thought maybe, did the police happen to drive by at some point while this was going on? We all slept through it and did wake up till it was way too late. And if they see this happen again, put your siren on right up and down the street, and I guarantee you we'll wake up. I guess that's it.
Thank you.
We have a lot of supporters here telling you.
Excuse me, sir, could you spell your last name for the record?
S O B O T K A.
Thank you.
Whatever information you have.
Next.
Hi, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. I was wondering if you completed the audit on the pilot programs? That's one of my questions. The other one is, why don't you tell the real reason why taxes go up? I think the difference between last year's budget and this year's budget, it's almost a million dollars, and I believe that would be outstanding in the pilot programs, of all the mishaps, that people don't collect money for mercantile licenses, and all the things that are going on in this city. I would like to know if Mr. Reedy and Mr. Neff could come to our next meeting, because I think they have a few questions to answer. Mr. Neff, Local Finance Board, he should be here to answer these questions about our taxes, about the $50 million bond that we took on for the developer, and then we get the developer that doesn't give two hoots about us? We're doing all this stuff, we're giving them a $50 million bond, we're going to take less taxes back? I mean, all these things come into play when you're paying taxes on a house, or a multiple dwelling, whatever. And it has nothing to do with color, neither, like somebody said. We on the east side are paying a very high tax rate, and I don't like it for one. I've been here 47 years. So I want to know the answer to the pilot programs, I want to know if Mr. Neff and Mr. Reedy could come in here to explain what they have done to us. And the other thing I want to know is, when you say that the taxes are higher on the east side, what happened? Is it one-third goes down, one-third goes up, and one-third stays the same? I want to know who stayed the same? Because we know that the southwest quadrant, they went down, and we know that we went up on the east side. So who stayed the same, is what I want to know. Was it the commercial properties? Was it the boardwalk properties? Were they assessed properly? Are they high enough? I'd like to know all these answers, because I think it's high time, with all that's going on in this town, that our taxes should be stable. Look at all the ratables we got. And just think about that. And all the people that are paying taxes now, all the condos, and still we have to get tax increases? There's something wrong here. I'd like an answer to it. Will you invite Mr. Neff and Mr. Reedy at our next meeting? That would be interesting.
That would be amazing.
Rita, to answer your questions, I believe there are just a couple more pilots that need to be audited. I think that we've done all but a couple of audits. I think that, uh, we've, we've done all but a, a couple of audits now, so when the last two are done, um, we can issue a summary report, um, regarding taxes. I think you heard Councilwoman Quinn say that we haven't had a revaluation in twelve years, and unfortunately, uh, for some, neighborhoods change. Sometimes neighborhoods change for the better, and sometimes because of, um, um, outside influences, um, traffic, or what have you, um, other neighborhoods change, um, not for the better. So the property assessments, um, are fair and represent market value. Um, so some people's taxes went up, some may have gone down, some have made, that's may have stayed the same. Their taxes, everyone's assessment has changed, everyone's assessment reflects market value. I would suggest, if your assessment doesn't reflect market value, you see the tax assessor. And, um, I'll absolutely shoot Tom Neff and Terry Reedy an email, see if they'd like to attend the next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from them. Because they're the ones that put it since predicament to begin with. So it'd be nice if they came. And the other thing is, we never got assessed, uh, we've always gotten assessed for ten years or more. It's, that's nothing new. We don't get assessed every year, now we are, because now we're at a hundred percent, but of course, everybody at the beachfront in the new houses, they're only gonna pay fifty-seven percent. We're gonna pay the rest. And plus the fact, they're not gonna pay a school tax. Isn't that nice?
Well, if, if I, if I could just add, Mayor, um, the new residences that are being built on the east side will pay taxes identical as if they were being taxed conventionally. So the dollar amount that all the new homeowners will be paying will represent exactly the same amount anyone else will pay elsewhere in, in the city. So it, it is a misnomer that they aren't paying their fair share.
Who's gonna pay off the bond? Next.
Duane Small, thirteen oh four Madison Avenue. At the last meeting, a friend of mine, Felicia Simmons, Axjaw, did y'all send out notices to people in the community that a sex offender is working in our city at the sewer plant? Especially in front of the playground, that is dedicated to the young kids who lost their lives in the Sandy Hook shooting? Did y'all send out notices to the community? And if not, when will they be going out? That's one question. In light of what is going on in Missouri, my question to y'all as a council, what are y'all doing, or what do y'all plan on doing, to address the underlying issues that's taking place? Such as joblessness, false charges, harassment, so on and so forth, amongst the young black men that's in our community? We don't need programs, we need policy. Because see, when it's policy, it's law, it has to be abided by. But as long as we're talking about this program, or that program, we will never get the problem solved. We need policy. And all of us in here, that attend council meetings, that understand the politics of our country, know that the problems that the young black men face across this country, especially here in Asbury Park, is economic based. So my question to y'all, once again, what are y'all planning on doing, and what do y'all want to do? I'm willing to help out. Right now, me and a few people in the community, with the young men who listen to us, and I heard them say about conflict resolution and retaliation. When it comes to that, them people are seen up there, can't stop retaliation. And the reason why they can't stop retaliation is because they don't know them young men. The ones that could stop it is people like me, that brother over there, that brother, that interact with these young men every day. So what is y'all planning? I'm willing to help y'all.
Can I suggest that you, you want, do you have something else you want to say? I don't want to cut you off.
No, go ahead, finish.
Um, one suggestion I have is that you join the Community Action Network, CAN, and they have not only a jobs, uh, branch of CAN...
I'm part of them already.
Oh, I didn't see you at the meetings, I'm sorry.
I was at a meeting, me and that brother, and we joined, I came to the microphone, spoke, as a matter of fact, he was there at the West Side. I'm still waiting for them to call me and give me an application.
Waiting for who to give you an application?
Um, Reverend Johnson, or tell me what we have to do to sign up, if we gotta pay a fee or anything.
I'm sure there'll be a meeting in September.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. But back to my question, I, it was two, about the notification and what are y'all plans? Each one of y'all can answer that. Now listen, if y'all don't, if y'all don't have nothing, be, be upfront with it, because all of us have to work to solve this problem. All of us. Ain't nobody isolated from it. Because if it goes down, it's gonna affect all of us.
So the one, one point I want to make, and you, and you had it made it as well, is our role is to set policy, right? So did we hire a sex offender? None of us hired a sex offender, so, so saying that is, is a bit, that, that's not accurate.
Yo, Amy, Amy, hold on. You, the question twisted, the policy was about the young black men, the notification that was there. We know you didn't hire, we know the past administration did that. We know that. That, when I was talking about policy, it wasn't in talking about that.
So, well, and let me just express what we're doing at this point, in terms of trying to put together a far more comprehensive hiring policy, that absolutely looks at residents, you know, closely first before branching out, and then examining the, taking off the, the block the box, and, and these other things. So in terms of policy, I think we're really on it, trying to, to review and, and have a best practices to hiring. Um, so, I'm not sure if that answers your questions in terms of job hiring, and, and what our role is, is policy.
Well, that's part of it, that's part of it. You leaving LaFredo, so I know you gonna help out.
Well, there's, you know, there's, you know, there's only so much that, that we can do, and we do set policy, but, you know, come on, Quinn, you know, how many years ago was it, when, you know, you were looking for work, and there's only so many jobs that the city itself, of course, can supply?
Yeah.
You know, and you know we've got a, we have a whole, um, network of names and jobs, and trying to place people and all that. Okay? And you also know, that we also have a skills problem, you know, let's just be honest.
It's not as, it's not as big as it appears to be.
Okay, but there's only so many jobs for so many people. Okay, one of the problems I see, and I don't like, you know, Asbury Park can't employ everybody. We have helped people get jobs outside of the city, which we've done. Now you also know that transportation became a problem for some people. They didn't have a car, they couldn't get a driver's license, whatever it is. All right? Um, you know, we'll do whatever we can, and I'll gladly try to find any solution. The other thing about, you know, being in the community, I don't know that those gentlemen, lady and gentlemen can do what you're saying, but I'm willing to reach out to anybody that can actually help.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I want to comment just briefly also. I think everyone up here is trying their very best to say, "Where can we get more jobs for the local youth?" And I, I really do believe that. I have a meeting this Friday on some, with someone that is gonna discuss jobs. So we're working hard, we realize, that, that some of the things that happened in Missouri happened because there was a lack of employment. The other thing I want to mention, we keep hearing about the sex offender here in the city. There are more people than you know, that are sex offenders in the City of Asbury Park, that are living close to schools. And there are regulations, I don't know exactly what the state regulations are, but as a city, we cannot give information as to who the sex offenders are. And, um, I would like to look further into what the state stipulations are, as far as notification by schools or a government, as to the sex offenders that have, happen to be there. I'll tell you what, I bet you in a lot of other cities, you wouldn't have as many sex offenders as we do here in the City of Asbury Park, but that it would be a community effort to drive them out, a community effort.
Thank you.
Well, since everybody else is taught, and Duane, you and I talked quite a bit throughout the week, and you know how I feel about this.
Yeah.
The past four meetings, I voted no on payroll. Why? Because we, we're doing a terrible job on hiring Asbury Park residents. I ran on a campaign saying, "Hire Asbury Park residents," and we're not doing it. Until we start doing it, I'm gonna vote no on payroll to the council. And it's not being addressed, we can sit up here and say we're trying, that's BS, it's not being addressed. There's been two to three jobs in the past couple of months been filled, and not filled by qualified Asbury Park residents. And they're the facts. And people that deny that are lying.
Thank you, Jim.
Maureen Nevin, Delight Court. Um, I have two areas I'd like to ask about. One is, um, on the taxes, have the, the developers caught up with all their taxes? Um, I heard that there were some repayment plans, um, that were offered to the developers. I'd like to know whether that is accurate, and whether they are also being offered to the residents. And the other area is, uh, the Bird's Nest, the C8, um, the I-STAR, uh, Esperanza, all the same lot. Um, why are we allowing I-STAR, which officially owns that site now, to, uh, to go ahead and build on other properties when they haven't taken care of that? Um, and I want to know whether the city could actually, um, rescind the redevelopment rights for failure to develop that property. Um, there was a contingency at one point in the agreement, which I don't know whether it's been amended, or, um, made void over the years, but you did have some sort of limit on how long you could have a, a parcel under construction before it was finished. I mean, it was just common sense. Can't have a half-finished site forever. So those are my questions.
Mayor, I can do part of it. I-STAR was not the original builder of that property, it was Metro Homes. They took over, uh, at bankruptcy. I know that there were negotiations with an entity to, uh, develop that site, but I don't think that Metro Homes or I-STAR came here to lose money, or to let that property sit fallow. I believe they'll do it as soon as they can in a timely manner. I mean, they have been true to their words so far, especially after we took them to court. That's all I can say on that.
Seeing that I have a, a minute to go yet, um, obviously they have the ability to build, because they are building. So, um, you know, I would just, um, propose that they build on the site that, uh, they bought, no one forced them to buy that site.
Somebody correct me, John, you've been here, Jack? I don't think there's a darn thing we can do to make them build there. Because the redevelopment agreement done in 2002 gave them thirty years to do whatever they want to do, when they want to do, and that's why we're in this predicament. And that's my understanding, somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
I also don't think, I don't remember, I mean, those are, they're, they're, they're thick documents, and we've read them recently, but the redevelopment agreement and the amendments, I don't remember reading, and I'll go back and look, Maureen.
Yeah.
In terms of, if a, if a project has started, even though I-STAR didn't necessarily start it, if they have to, if it somehow gets bumped up to top priority. I don't remember reading anything that had that kind of language in it. Um, if you think there is, I'll go back and take another look, or I'll talk to John about it. But I think they can keep it undeveloped through, you know, for, for the length of the agreement, or...
Well, the original company, yes, went into bankruptcy. Remember what happened with the last company that went into bankruptcy?
But there's nothing in that...
We sat here for over, we sat here for over thirty years, that's right, there's nothing in there that says they have to do that first. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerry Scranton, Long Branch, once a high-paid taxpayer here. Okay, I kinda liked when I used to see the black hole sheets on the wall, because I still have not received an answer after eight times coming here about the time clocks, about bi-weekly meetings, monthly reports, or an ordinance for no summer vacation. Um, I almost feel within a time warp here, the taxes go up when they claim some parts of the town go up, some parts of the town go down. No one admits that two years ago, a million dollars got lost in the budget. No one's talking about the million dollars in the budget, in the pilot program that we never collected the money. No one's talking about the great deal that I-STAR got with the fifty million dollar bond for infrastructure, that, that people paying a hundred percent taxes in the new condo, I think forty percent's gonna go back to paying that infrastructure. I feel we're in a time warp, and I don't know how the people just sit here and accept it. But the other thing is, I thought I was living in the French Revolution, when Sue Henderson told I-STAR, "I like your picture of the hotel." What she should have said was, "Now that you're gonna build a hotel, are you gonna make sure twenty percent of the employees live in Asbury Park?" She reminds me of Queen Antoinette. "Oh, the people are starving, go feed 'em cake." Thank you.
So can I also just, may, I'm only gonna make one note for what you're saying, Jerry. You know, we are, to say that we're not talking about the pilots, right? So we, we, we have paid an auditor to audit every single pilot, to ensure that we're now getting the money that we should have been getting over the years. So, I mean, that would be the, I, I also oftentimes feel like it falls into a black hole as well. But with the pilot program, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with you saying that, because we have an auditor who's given me personally, and is gonna summarize, I think, all of them, Jack said, but has certainly gone through more than five and given me a report on it.
All I'm asking, tell the people the truth with bad management that caused these problems.
Next.
Lori Ross, West Side Community Center, one fifteen Dewitt Avenue. It is, what I'm hearing, um, policy issues with regards to the council. There are numerous issues, and there's a, hopefully there'll be a level of accountability with the new election. Um, there's numerous issues that we all know, and it begins and ends with qualified staff. Um, you are a lawyer, Councilwoman Quinn, and you have, uh, other lawyers with regards to this pedophile issue. I don't even know why that's still an outstanding issue. You have policy, there's state guidance with regards to the reporting mechanisms and all of that. Now, to Mr. Nuccio's point about the drug alliance, it's so sad, because I remember three, four years ago, being part of CAN, and the Asbury Park Community Development Initiative, the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Mr. Huth spent a lot of time trying to get the city part of the drug alliance program. For Mr. Nuccio to use the excuse that it's too much paperwork, too little money, when the, I thought the inherent issue with the drug alliance is getting the community engaged and involved, and doing some prevention with regards to drugs. You have Prevention Verse here, Ms. Diane Shelton, as well as other providers that could help get that done. I understand that there are city employees that didn't have anything to do, that are being reassigned. Um, and the sad part of that is, perhaps they could provide some clerical assistance, some assistance with gathering information to getting that done. And you have a whole bunch of stakeholders in the community, east side, west side, throughout the town, to get that done. And based on the needs in the city, it's appalling that Mr. Nuccio would not apply because it's just twelve thousand dollars. Because I'm a taxpayer in the state of New Jersey, in Long Branch, and I'm subsidizing all this mess with everybody here. So to say that too little money, too much time is appalling. Also, with regards to Ms. Rita's point about the pilot, uh, tax initiatives, I would love to know who's accountable for that, who negotiated those deals, because what the auditor is telling you, to me, it seems like it's criminal. Deals are made, and I'm surprised, I'm sorry that Mr. Huth is gone, because that needs to be an investigation. People got some really big tax breaks. And the reality is, there needs to be an investigation. We have a state monitor, and perhaps the council could invite the state monitor to come and discuss some of these, uh, issues. Because, um, again, it's ridiculous. Also, with regards to accountability, you have fifty thousand dollars allocated in the community development block grant, approved grant. Um, could that be better used to, instead of hiring a consultant to do a five-year plan, which you're no longer community development director, but she is your municipal department head, is supposed to be doing? Couldn't that money be used to hire an employee, or employees for the full year? I mean, to spend fifty thousand dollars to prepare a five-year plan, which should be done in-house, is disgusting. It's policy and it's fraud, waste, and abuse.
Arman Kai Macian, three seventeen Sixth Avenue. I thank Mr. Manager, City Manager, which he did my best he could do, but, but still we have a problem with the guy... But, but still, we have a problem with the garbage dumpsters. They leave the dumpster open, never close the door. And there's animals goes in there, animals goes out, smell terrible. Absolute terrible. And I try to close the dumpster. They say you're going, "Don't transport our property. You're not allowed to go." So I don't know what to do. I need your guys' help. I know City Manager tried, and we're in a court case, they keep postponing. This is the second time. I don't know how many times they can postpone.
So, Council. The update that I have on code enforcement is, um, the first meeting was adjourned. Uh, there was a discovery that was asked by the attorney for the property owner. The next camp, uh, the next court date is scheduled for September 3rd, which is considered as a trial date. So they will be before our municipal court on September 3rd.
But they could postpone again? I mean, you know, this is the second time they did.
I, I doubt that our Mr. Court Judge will allow them to postpone indefinitely. So, um, I would only assume that it will be heard very shortly.
I really appreciate you trying your best. I know you went there and you were there to suggest what they could do. I hope that will be, you know, last time I couldn't come and complain. Thank you.
10 years.
We all hope it's the last time. Not because of you, because this is ridiculous. If we're going on 12 years, I'm, I'm telling you, if we did an audit of what this was considering, just the past years that I've been here and go through the legal bills, it's obnoxious. I mean, tens of thousands of dollars with no answers.
It's a simple question.
So it is obnoxious.
Next.
Joe Warner, 1103 and a half, Third Avenue. And I just wanted to, to the Wesley Grove people, um, I'm, I'm a member of the Environmental Shatree Commission, and I would be happy to be a liaison between the commission and you all, and try to work, because essentially what happened, I think, is what you guys had said is exactly right. We're increasing our impervious structure. We put in old infrastructure, which is good infrastructure. But old infrastructure's job is to take the water off the street as quickly as possible and get it into a body of water. It doesn't really take into account the quality of that water, so we have polluted water. You can't let it run into the ocean, because that's our number one resource, right, in this area? And it doesn't take into account where that water goes, right? Which goes into the lake, floods, the storm drains, backs it all up. So we need to have in our plan smaller, and I was talking to Tony about it. When you have those small, like, when you have the big flash flood or big downpour, you need smaller pockets that can catch the basin, the water in the basin, slow it down, and slowly release it into the lake. So it's not impossible. It can, there can be things that we can do to complement the old infrastructure that we have. And I think that the Environmental Commission would be the people to spearhead it with the planning board, and I would be happy to be liaison and work with you all because it's absolutely something the city has to deal with all over the place, not just in Wesley, Wesley Lake. Um, so the second thing was, um, to Dwayne's point, and I agree 100%. Um, jobs are important. I agree with Councilman Lefredo, skills are important. Um, not only that, we need to, like, take it, like, as comprehensive as possible because, um, it's jobs, it's skills, it's building our economy so that we have the right kind of jobs. Similar to the storm drains and the, and the flooding, we need to have in our plan an economy that has jobs for people of all different skills. Right? So we have service jobs down in the waterfront, that's great. Nobody wants to be in the service job their whole life. We need to have light industry, we need to have different kind of manufacturing, things like that. We need to have all those different things. And all the different programs to, and programs or jobs to keep our youth, like, moving up the scale. And I would say that it's, jobs are important, skills are important. But I teach in Neptune, and I, Dwayne knows those kids from, and I, I teach everybody in Neptune from K to 5. I, I do a program. And Dwayne, Dwayne knows the kids I'm talking about. They have from Asbury to Neptune back and forth. And as a new parent, being a parent is really hard, right? It's, it's a hard thing to do. If you're in a situation where I own a house, I have, have a good relationship with my wife, everything's great, some of our parents also need support because we're not, they're not, not everybody's in the best situation when they become a parent. So it's jobs at that end, but it's also doing what we can as a community to support our parents. And I would be always, I'm always happy, I, I wrote letters about it to the paper. It's the most important issue in our city, as far as I'm concerned, is how we can help our parents and help our youth so they don't go on the wrong path and, and, and what's happening, how we have to provide it. Thank you.
I get to wrap it up. Thank you. Arnold Fall, here in Asbury Park. I just have two quick questions. Um, Sackman, 550 Cookman, has he paid his pilot in full? Okay, because I see that there's a...
550 in full, sound backs, $500,000 down.
Okay.
Two-year pay.
No, well, there's an ordinance for some things to do at his place, so I'm just curious. Um, second thing is, um, how did we make out with coming up with a price for Michael's group for the redevelopment? A contract, anything? Now that we have an assessed value of the property, we should know what we can tell them they gotta pay us before they get financing. Anybody?
Yeah, currently, we are looking at a price that is equates to $10,000 a unit. Uh, so for the three parcels, 64 units, it would be $640,000. Uh, that's a number that we're, um, surrounding or looking at now. We haven't finalized that, that number yet, but, um, that's been our, our starting point.
That's great. What's his assessed value? Do we have any idea?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. And Mayor Council, you, you know, we've been discussing jobs for a long time now. The Community Action Network hasn't done a thing. We gave out $70,000 in, you know, Community Development Block grant funds, and we haven't seen nothing produced from that. So maybe we should form a committee or, you know, get a few people together and let's discuss what we're gonna do. Of course, we know, like Mr. Lefredo said, that the jobs in town are not, you know, they're, they're not here. But these people have to be trained in forklift driving, you know, electric plumbing, carpentry, things like that. Quit the nonsense with making them waiters and waitresses. And, go ahead, Mayor. The one last thing was, we hired a new director for code enforcement who lives out of town. You're telling me that there was no qualified attorneys in the city of Asbury Park that was looking for that job? So we've already violated our new policy of trying to hire city residents.
He's living in the town.
I'm sorry?
He's living in the town.
He is?
That don't count.
Yeah, no, that don't, I know. So, thank you.
If I could comment?
Go ahead, Mayor.
I have had Lincoln Tech down here twice with presentations right here in the chamber. I am going to ask you to get 10 people that I can take up to Lincoln Tech so they can see the facility. They have to be grad, high school graduates, and hopefully enroll in a program that will give them life skills where they probably will never be unemployed. And that they, they have classes that start in September. Get me 10 people, please.
Okay. I mean, you know, this is what we need. You know, we, we don't need to teach them how to wait tables and, you know, pay for point-of-sale system to train them and, you know, all that good stuff. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Can you fix your qualifications for being at Lincoln Tech?
Yes. Primarily, you have to be a high school graduate, number one. Um, if you have minor criminal offenses, you can still get into Lincoln Tech. But they determine that. If I can give you an example, a few months, four or five months ago, my hot water heater, I thought it was out, and I called to have someone look at it. Asked the guy, "Did you happen to go to Lincoln Tech?" And he said, "Yes." And he proceeded to tell me that he lived in Red Bank. He ran the streets of Asbury Park, and he knows everything that's going on out here because he was a part of it. He said, "But something happened, and as a result of it, I ended up going to Lincoln Tech." And if, if I want to, I'm quoting him, "I can make $100,000 a year." He said, "I just don't wanna work that hard." And so there's all type of, there, there are, I'm, I'm just gonna tell you, one of the programs with Lincoln Tech, and a lot of local youth around here know how to hook up TVs and video equipment and speakers, et cetera, um, alarms. That's one, just one of the areas they cover at Lincoln Tech. I don't have all that. Um, let me take some people up there, and the finance people up there can let you know.
Thank you, Mayor.
Where is it?
Um, Union, Union. And they even have people coming out to New York City going there.
How much is it?
I don't know.
Good evening, Daniel Weiss on Fourth Avenue. I've been listening to some of the comments, and certainly, uh, some of them are, are good suggestions. Um, with Mr. Small's comments going on and on and on incessantly about the sex offender, it would be helpful if there was more information, since he is so apparently or extensively concerned about it. There are three levels of sex offenders. And it's, uh, people who are deemed to be, um, at low risk, moderate risk, or severe risk. If I had to take an educated guess, my guess would be that most likely, this person who is employed, hopefully, was at low risk. However, as a suggestion, because I think, as a suggestion, I think what we should do with this website that the city is constructing is have a link. Because as the mayor was suggesting, um, we do have an extraordinarily high number of residents living here. And I'm as concerned and more concerned about the number of residents, um, who are living here. So if you look at the New Jersey State Police, www20.state nj.us, it's there, page after page after page after page. And I'm sure this is just what the mayor was talking about. I'm sure this is just what, uh, Councilwoman Quinn is talking about. We need to have this as part of the information, public information that should be on our city website in the future. And I just also want to respond to one person who spoke in the beginning about the police living, um, in town. I certainly am a huge proponent of the city trying to hire as many people as, as humanly possible, but as Councilwoman Lefredo said, we're not a job bank. We have a limited number of jobs. But, um, I've been an attorney for over 20 years. I can tell you, the, the people we don't wanna force to live here are people in law enforcement. Because people in law enforcement are putting their very lives at risk every single day when they are investigating and arresting people. We don't wanna have to have any kind of rule implemented that police must live here or that all police must live here. That's absolute insanity. And I, I think any discussion about that, um, needs to be very carefully scrutinized because that's just dangerous policy, and it will limit quality of people being recruited in the future. If anything, frankly, um, people in law enforcement should often live outside of the town where they're working, um, for their very safety. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Just so you know, no matter what we talk about, we're not gonna talk about it. It's state law. Police department can live wherever they want to. That's state law. So if anybody wants to say they should live in town, or if anyone's saying they shouldn't live in town, take it up with, uh, your local legislators. Nothing we can do about it. It's state law. Move it close.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are on Union. I have Jane, listed on the agenda. Approval intent? Uh, the July 16th and the August 6th meeting.
Voted aye. Stay with the 16th, yes, of the other.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn? Yes. We're going to, uh, I have age bill resolutions and workers' comp claims.
Take it outside, close.
We have a bill resolution for $2,140,865 and 84 cents.
Voted aye.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Workers' comp claims for $18,271 and 62 cents.
Voted aye. Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, under, we have applications, we have these special events as outlined by Tom Gilmore during the work session.
Voted aye.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Um, we have a liquor license under applications for a person-to-person transfer request for 303 Memorial Drive, and there's also a resolution regarding this.
Voted aye. That's actually on later on, we have. Okay.
And we are, um, a motion to go to a public hearing for the 2014 budget amendment.
Voted aye.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
No motion open?
Motion open?
Okay, that's what he just did.
Yes.
Open the public hearing.
Yes. Here it is. Does anyone want to be heard?
Would anyone from the public like to be heard with regard to the amendment to the 2014 municipal budget?
Could you explain it?
We have our ship, we have our ship over here. You can give it.
I see the guy, he's like, 14,700 something. What was it last year? Did you explain it? The budget amendment, it brought, uh... Turn it be turned around so he we can see it?
It would be better.
I mean, I would want...
I'll come back here.
You can come back and talk.
Oh, okay. That's even better.
Yeah.
The, uh, the budget amendment you had before you was very comprehensive, I realize that. Um, a lot of things had to change from the beginning budget to the ending budget. Uh, we were anticipating, uh, 2.93 million dollars from, uh, the state in transitional aid. And we had to wait for that final number before we could, uh, actually present to you an adopted budget for time. So once we realized that we weren't gonna get 2.3, we had to do a lot of shifting around of items that we, uh, didn't anticipate not having to do. Um, so briefly, our revenues on the transitional aid are dropping $632,500 that we didn't anticipate when we introduced the budget. What was that again, 600 and what? $632,500. Um, so we needed to make that up somewhere in order to keep our budget in place.
But I, I, I should, I should add that that was, $632,000 from the introduction to the adopted, the actual amount less that we received this year was over a million dollars less in transitional aid. And, uh, I think we brought the budget in with, uh, fairly in, in increase. So there was more than a million dollars worth of transitional aid less received this year.
That's correct.
But I have a question. What, the call to drop?
That's the, uh, decision of the state. That's not our decision. I couldn't directly answer what day we had, Mr. Kelly and I.
I'll add, I'll add to that, you question. Um, the transitional aid is for cities that are having difficulty. Um, there were, there was a lot of property that, uh, was demolished. Uh, the city had a larger police force and, um, fire force, and we were having a problem with, um, not enough revenue and too many expenses. And the state assists us, uh, over the last, uh, number of years with this special transitional aid. It's called transitional aid. So it's just transition you from a poorer financial position to a better financial position. And the state recognizes that we are getting in a, a better financial position, so they reduce the amount of assistance to us because we have been getting better.
So, um, with that drop in aid, we needed to, uh, see where else we could come up with revenues. So what we did was, I had, uh, we had surplus anticipated. We increased to offset certain amounts by another $500,000 roughly. We also had numerous grants that were not in our original budget that, uh, we now have in this budget that are in the amendment. that are in the amendment. We, the appropriation side, most of the appropriation side is due to the contract negotiations that were underway and are close to being finalized. So everybody that was already on the books had to be calculated with a one and a half or two percent raise that was being negotiated. So if you look at all the individual line items, they had to be calculated for all those salary lines to be increased to cover all those increases. I don't know if there's anything specific that you want to approach on it. I can go item by item and tell you why, but I don't think anybody wants to hear that.
I think, Ricky, if you can tell us maybe the total increase in the, in the amount to be raised by, by taxation perhaps, and what percentage, if you know, does that represent? And why were we required to increase it to that level?
Our total tax will be increased by roughly $700,000 from 2013 to this budget. We increased it for obviously, the reason of dropping our surplus, I mean, dropping our transitional aid by over $1.1 million. We didn't have $1.1 million, but we had availability in taxes to raise that within the 2% cap. The state, as Mr. Kelly alluded to, saw that. They're not going to keep giving the money to us if we have the capability of having another source of getting that money. So they saw that, and that's the biggest reason why we're going up $700,000. The average homeowner, I know there's been a discussion about it, is dropping from last year's taxes to this year's taxes by $90 based upon the average assessment.
Why don't I just want to be above average?
Is there anyone I would like to speak?
Move the clothes.
Second. Oh, David, aye?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
We are on to item A, resolution. The first resolution we have is a resolution endorsing a 2014 municipal budget.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Item B and C have been deferred to the September 3rd meeting. On to item D, a resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with Neptune Township for engineering and public works related goods and services.
Move it.
Second.
Shared services are good. I have no problem with this in general, but the problem I have is when it says engineering services. We know the engineer's been trying for a year to get an assistant. We know our council has been saying, no, those things necessary. Is this trying to circumvent that now? I have no problem, like, say, the Sioux Plate needs somebody from Long Beach or Neptune to go down there and fix it. Neptune needs our pocket truck, no problem. But if we're going to get into any type of long-term, be it more than a day or two, jobs for engineering services, I think we should be made aware of it, give us the decision. Do we do it in-house? Do we hire outside? And this is not a way to circumvent getting another employee on board.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, John. No, no way is it designed to circumvent city council's decision regarding hiring professional services. Engineering was just kind of a catch-all phrase. It's primarily for those things that you mentioned. We have licensed engineers on staff. Every once in a while, they have a problem that they need diagnosed and vice versa. So primarily, that's what the agreement is all about. And we wanted something formal in place so we all recognize that we're doing the right thing. And the agreement spells out when we send an employee over there, it's just going to be based on their hourly rate and what the fringes are. And there is also a schedule for whichever, whatever we borrow, vice versa.
Okay, again, shared services are good. Should we throw out one for Robin Beach since we've been doing them for years?
We should. Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
We are on to item P, a resolution to approve a payroll for $1,000,320 and eighty cents.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we have a resolution for a person-to-person transfer for 303 Memorial Drive.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
We have a resolution for a memorandum of agreement between the New Jersey State Department of Munk County and the City of Asbury Park for 2014.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Quick, quick question. On page three, it says, City of Asbury Park representative, it's not filled in. Who's that?
City manager.
Okay.
This, this was, this is the way that, very quickly, I was advised. My predecessor just signed his new legislative council. I just thought it was important that it isn't before the council, and you know, who are the kids that are working in this department?
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Excuse me, did we do G or C?
First, yeah, 303, yes, we did three.
Okay.
The one room has been deferred, the one relating to 508 groupment?
Has been.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That'll be before you on September the 3rd.
And we are on to a resolution authorizing the purchase of electricity and natural gas supply for public use on an online auction website.
Move it.
Jack, do you want to explain it real quick?
The state allows the city to enter into what's a reverse auction. This is more of a common, has become common now. So we contract with a company that runs an online auction site. They see our volume of service, that we do, sort of volume of gas, volume, or amount of electricity. And it's bid on an auction website. And today, the bids came in, and each year for the next two years, we'll save approximately $65,000 or $70,000. Just because our rates now are tariff rates. So if we don't go out to competitively purchase gas or electricity, we will get from J.C. Penel and P.S.E.G. a tariff rate. By going out to the open market, we're purchasing electricity from companies we've probably never heard before. Hudson Something or Other, and I forget who the other one was that today bid on our commodity.
And it's an approximate where we saved in 2012, 2013?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to a resolution in support of the nomination of Pam Elam to receive the Heart Can Hand Award at a lunch break gala to be held on October 20th, 2014.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson? Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to ordinance.
Senator, you take the resolution to share in the cost of Neptune Township for Wesley Lake.
That is missing from my packet.
Sure.
Okay, then, a resolution to share in the costs with Neptune Township for Wesley Lake, we control.
Move it.
You know what? I know this is the item, but I do have a question.
Has it been seconded first?
No, second.
Anybody in the discussion?
Second. I am in favor of this, but I've had different people approach me. That the Pop Warner players do not have uniforms, all of them don't have uniforms or helmets. And I know that this probably is not the appropriate place to bring this up. And I think it's imperative that the city, whether it be the recreation department or some other department, contribute to these young people. And it's not the whole team, but these young people getting helmets and uniforms.
They do already.
No, they don't.
We welcome, even if we are, we welcome for this we have.
I'm not saying that you didn't. They don't have them in this current moment. There are Pop Warner players without, not the whole team, without uniforms or helmets.
Well, I believe that. I also believe I can change bills and claims of this year where we want to provide for Pop Warner.
Well, that's, yes.
I'd find it major, sir, up tomorrow night at the fire department. You look pretty fortunate, ready for Pop Warner, check $1,500,000 to the cost of air supply.
Thank you. Okay.
You have a very good idea, ma'am. Thank you. You brought that up.
Okay, second.
Move it.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
I'm going to vote yes because Jim Henry told him to. And if he wasn't here tonight, I was going to vote. I'm going to give a very strong speech. And I'm also going to hold Dr. Bradley as well as his next council meeting. He's going to go back to his, Mayor Bradley, go back to his committee and say, take out the gates because that is wrong, 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 wrong. And he's got to be set up to come to this meeting. Maybe I'll go to his meeting, be the setup.
That's good.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to item L, ordinances.
I think before we move on to ordinances, did you want to take a vote with regard to the item that City Manager brought up earlier about the change to your commission's request to put a fence up beyond the community garden? Right, your consent?
I'm sorry, that's necessary, but I would vote for it.
I, I totally agree. I'd like to do this, you have no idea.
I am in favor of it. My question is, once again, because it has not gone through the procedure that anyone else has to go through to put a fence up. We have no idea how high it's going to be.
You're right, but there's the, the ordinance states it has, can't block light air space. If it's under four feet, it should actually be fine.
It's a city-owned property.
And city-owned property, so it is on.
The issue is that since it's on city-owned property, you, as the governing body, provide your policy call to allow it, subject to the requirements of your existing ordinance.
Yes.
Absolutely. It's just, yeah, I'm going to vote yes.
You just need to.
Since it, since it's a good time to ring it up, the one on six or two fourths, whatever. I mean, we're going to have four meetings now. Again, we're running up tons of legal bills. I have no idea what's going on.
Hopefully not here.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what I really care, but I mean, I'm going to go to ACTV two meetings ago, hope it's not a race, and see, I believe, two meetings ago, we said, give them a summons, they broke the law. But you keep on bringing back just the US American stuff.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure, and I apologize for not having it tonight, but I will email everyone tomorrow. I'm not sure if a summons hasn't been issued.
The letter I read, it says it hasn't been. Because they're waiting for action from the council.
Okay.
So what action do you want us to take?
No, you don't need to take any action.
And I, I know we didn't discuss that tonight, John voted up. But I'm looking at the pictures, the guy brought them, and okay, the fence looks fine. But some of the pictures you took of other houses, these people actually have their fence sent back, several feet from the property line. This is right up to the sidewalk. Not that I'm saying it's bad or ugly or unsafe or anything like that, but I mean, you really should have found better examples than people who actually have the fence sent back. When he sent us the letter in June, he said, I'm going to build it. And when we drove by, it was already built. So it's going to be like the transportation center, this is going to be like everything. I've been talking about this for years, it's going to be like this, aren't you? I mean, five years and I remember we talked about this fence, so what is fault for approval?
And I think you're right with the council one, because what was in Barbara Van Wager's memo to Mr. Semen, that was part of the packets, was information from Ms. Wager, Van Wager, where she finished by saying, if a property applies to the city council for set approval, then she will not issue a summons, and so the decision is made by the city council. So this matter's been pending before you for some time as to whether you were going to allow it to remain in the right way or whether you were not going to allow it to remain and have her proceed with the process of issuing a summons and requiring it to be removed. So if it's a policy call, you go in that direction, then absolutely, by all means.
Well, Jared, what was, I'm sorry, what was you going to find out first?
I don't, I don't know why Barbara is taking that approach because she issues summonses pretty quickly, so what, she's had deference to this one time. But we were just going to meet and try to develop a policy for city council regarding those fences that already exist.
I, I from one, and I understand what John was saying, but I from one would like some sort of comprehensive policy. Are we going after everybody whose fence is in the right way or going after six or two? Because what's going to happen is we go. So I, I'm always more comfortable if we have a comprehensive policy. If that delays this for a couple of weeks, I don't, I don't see it being any great problem.
Well, and some of those people did get permission to, I mean, they actually came before us to.
Some people did get approval from the mayor council by way of reservation.
And this is what we'll have to review. This item won't be on the agenda next year.
I was just hoping ordinance is a comprehensive policy. Ordinance is not a comprehensive policy.
I believe it is.
Okay. And you, no?
I was wondering.
Sorry, I was going to, I thought that ordinance was a comprehensive policy.
Well, the ordinance, one, I'm not sure if I think an ordinance is a comprehensive policy because what I'm saying to you is that, are we going after, are we going after everyone who did not previously get permission by the city council to put it in the right way? Or is this just specific to this particular person? Is there a policy if you do it before you've even asked, right? Because your letter, similar to what you were saying. So an ordinance to me is not a comprehensive policy. I want to know what we're going to do across the city. Is it, and is this a priority? Is our priority fences in the right way? Because, you know, potentially debate that one on you too.
I agree with you.
Give me a policy.
But for the past six weeks, I get in my package every week, we're going to move it, we're going to move it, we come here and nothing's up with it, so.
I get it, I get that question. I get that question.
But then you don't, don't send it to my house.
Well, there's, there's been a bunch of piecemeal comments about this one particular fence and coming in piecemeal. And that's why it keeps on appearing. It won't show next time. So we do have a comprehensive policy.
That would be wonderful.
So, so that guy's home free.
No, no.
Which I have no problem with. I mean, I kind of like this. I know people don't. I like him too, but why didn't he vote? Okay, we're not going to be the right store.
Yeah, right, but you can worry. So should we get back to the fence at the community garden?
I think we said yes.
Yes.
Take a question.
Make a, make a motion.
Motion to have a fence.
To approve the construction of fence. I'll vote. Community garden on.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Where's the money going to?
The environmental commission, we're not asking the city for money. We never ask the city for money.
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
What color is it? What's it going to be painted? It's a classified ordinance.
Okay, we are on to item L, ordinance, first reading. We have an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 13 entitled abandoned properties, I'm sorry, Section 13-2 entitled abandoned properties of Chapter 13 entitled property maintenance of the revised general ordinances of the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes, and let me say, when I read these packets, I love seeing them. So I was thrilled to see the abandoned property. So yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
And the public hearing on this ordinance will be September 17th. The next one, we have an ordinance establishing restricted parking space for use by a handicapped person at property located at 1104 First Avenue, designated as Block 1602, Block 16 in the City of Asbury Park, and amending and supplementing Section 7-36 entitled handicapped parking of the revised general ordinances of the City of Asbury Park. And the public hearing will be held on September 17th.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Of an ordinance amending and supplementing Section 4-9 entitled displaying of merchandise in public areas, outdoor sidewalk cafes entitled general licensing of the revised general ordinances of the City of Asbury Park. Public hearing will be held on September 17.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 2 entitled administration of the revised general ordinances of the City of Asbury Park in order to establish a new section thereof to be named as Section 2-85 entitled fees and procedures for reimbursement of mayor's expenses in connection with marriages and civil union ceremonies. The public hearing will be held on September 17.
Move it.
Second.